All right, everybody, we got six thirty. We're gonna call the regular meeting in the common council to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Seth?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
Mark Kirkking?
Here.
Emma will not be here. Todd Spade?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Crystal will not be here and Steve?
Here.
And Justin?
Here. Pledge of allegiance. All right, item two, approval of the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, regular council minutes.
This is Seth and I move we approve January twenty five minutes.
Start, I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion a second. Any questions?
January twenty eighth, isn't it?
Here, so January twenty eight, twenty five.
Yeah. Got a motion, a second, questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, item number three, council announcements. Any member of the council have any announcements? Cindy?
Yes. Have you all had a chance to look at the February edition of the municipality? Page thirteen, we are in the spotlight. Guys. I don't know, did they ask you to write that or did you guys just, uh?
Yeah.
Says strong partnerships to address housing and other community needs. Uh, it's talking about the North Point project. So, very nice article.
Yeah, wonderful. They were looking for housing success stories, so I took a chance to self-promote Verocla and threw it in there, so.
What and how? It's very nice. You guys should check it out.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else?
AJ here. Um, I'd like to give a big thanks to, uh, the Vernon County Law Enforcement Association for the Cops on Kids Ice Fishing Event they did this past Saturday. Uh, Lieutenant Jason Crew put together a great event. Um, lots of thanks to the Farge Fire Department for the drone presentation, uh, Veroca Fire Department for the water rescue demonstration. Uh, the DNR was present, Eugene Bay for the snowmobile safety. Um, lots of other thanks, but, uh, that's just the shorter list, uh, but it's a great event, so.
Thanks AJ. Anything else? All right, we will move on down to item number four, which is the first period of public comment. Anybody in attendance wishes to speak now would be the time. Um, if not, anybody online would certainly.
Yeah, Mayor, we have a handful of folks online, so if anybody online or, uh, in the audience, uh, would like to make a public comment, please, uh, feel free to unmute your mic or come up to the microphone here and, and make your comment.
Seeing nobody here, nobody online. We will move on to, yeah, is there somebody online?
Well, we just had a lot of people. I was just gonna give them a half beat here.
Sure.
I think you're good though, Mayor.
All right. Um, we'll move on down then to item number five, which is acknowledgement of fire department annual awards, and I'm gonna let Chief Burris take this one.
All right. Thank you for putting this on the agenda, Mayor. So, once a year, usually in January, February, we always have an annual banquet and we recognize all of the members, but, uh, we also recognize key individuals. Typically, it's a, it's a Rookie of the Year, which is a usually one-year-to-eighteen-month new firefighter. They get selected for, for showing that, you know, they have the initiative and drive and all that other stuff. We also typically do a firefighter of the year and, uh, then we do a Beyond Expectations Award. And then we also do a EMR, uh, award for the, the medical side of things now. We also recognize years of service, uh, anywhere from, it goes by five-year increments, so five up to, you know, how many ever years they are, have been on, so. Just have a good time, have some good laughs, a lot of thank yous, um, spouses are there, a lot of thank yous to the spouses, so on and so forth, so. That event happened a couple of weeks ago. Uh, that's not, that's part of why I'm here tonight, to make sure that council knows that, uh, the, the department does that for their members. It's been going on forever. Uh, but this year, we also had a new award that, uh, had come up and, uh, something that's pretty special to us, uh, something that's unique, something that doesn't happen very often. Um, and we ended up recognizing an individual that, uh, has a lot of integrity, very knowledgeable in the service. You couldn't, uh, you couldn't find anybody, uh, more dedicated to, uh, the public in many different ways. And, uh, we thought that, uh, it would be an important, uh, award to, to bring into a bigger forum and in front of the council and, and the public. But as you see, we've got a fair amount of your, your firefighters here tonight to, uh, partake in that and to participate and show their support. Um, but yeah, again, back to this individual, they're just, it's, I don't even know what to say. Mo-most of you know him, all of you know him, and, uh, words are really hard to even, and describe this person, but, uh, they, they've put their whole life, heart and soul into this community. Uh, anywhere from the police side of things to the medical side of things to, uh, definitely the fire side of things. Um, anything to do with blinky lights to red fire trucks, to how they're built, to how you fix them, to just every aspect. Um, but not only that, then, you know, council, he's been a, a, a big piece of, of council, so every aspect of the city when it comes to emergency services or the well-being of the community, he's, he's dedicated his whole life to that. And, uh, this year, or twenty twenty-four marked, uh, fifty years of him being part of the Veroca Fire Department. Fifty years. So again, that very rarely happens and the man himself, I don't know if anybody else has hit that number for Veroca Fire, but I'm not aware of that person. So, does anybody else have anything that they would like to say? I'm guessing probably not, but if you do, please come up. Okay? So, we have a, we came up with a new award for, for John Thompson. Might as well say his name now, everybody's got it figured out, but. So this award is gonna be for John Thompson, and again, it's a new award that we, uh, created that we're giving out. Pretty good chance that not very many people will get this award over the years, but that's why it's so special to us, right? So, you guys wanna come up? So normally when we get years of service, we give them a pin, so this is his award, no. But this, this pin has fifty years of service on there, so that's obviously. But then we also, uh, had this, this award designed, spin it around the other way, it's backwards, sorry. Careful of it. So we, we had this award created for him and what we're calling it is the John Thompson Lifetime Achievement Award for John Thompson. So it's obviously the first, but moving forward, when someone hits certain staples, it may not be fifty years, but it's, there's other people that are gonna be deserving of this award over the years, I believe. And it's again, someone that goes, I mean, well beyond, I mean, every aspect, like I talked before, every aspect of emergency services, the community safety in general. And so someday, someone might meet his, his level of, uh, dedication. But, uh, you know, John Thompson Lifetime Achievement Award, and it's got a little saying on there, um, we'll leave it out, whatever you wanna do, but again, thank you, John, for everything and another fifty years to go, so. Um, appreciate it and thank you, everybody, for being here tonight to show your support. Um, you mean a lot to us, so again, thank you. Fair enough, so. Speech, John, or you should say something.
Right, nobody ever gives speeches when they win an award, but I think this one might be deserving of that.
Even if it's three words.
Well, I don't really know what to say. I certainly didn't expect this. I was wondering why the chief had everybody here tonight and I didn't figure it out, so. It's been a wonderful experience. I mean, we deal with good and bad and you do some good for some people and you take some, some pleasure in that. Um, but other times, things don't go so well and you take the pain in that, but that's just the way it goes. Um, I couldn't have made it this long without the help of everybody else that's here. And, uh, I don't have much oomph left, but I'm still trying, so thank you, everybody.
Uh, before everybody leaves, Lori has a good point here, so I'm gonna blame it on her, so I don't get in trouble for it. Uh, first off, congratulations, John. It's been an honor to work with you the times that, that I've had with you, so. Um, but as long as we have all of these firefighters and EMRs and even some law enforcement in the room, I think now would be a great time to come up, stand up, introduce yourself, tell us who you are, and then, uh, yeah, I think that'd be great. Richard, you can start.
I'm Richard Running. I've been on the department for five years now, so, and I, but I'm the second oldest.
Uh, Lieutenant Todd Sandwick, been on the department for fourteen years.
So I'm Megan Hayne. Um, I'm actually one of the EMRs in the department and have just been just over a year.
I'm Eliot Sylufson, firefighter EMS, EMR, actually, and I've been on the, um, in the service for two years now.
Dustin Dahl, uh, fire on the Veroca Fire Department, um, and I've been on for three years.
I'm a firefighter EMR Troy Sandwick. I've been on the fire department for nine years.
Jeff Walburn, City of Veroca Police Department, investigator, fourteen years.
Previous Veroca Fire Department member.
Previous, six years Veroca Fire, yes.
Yes.
Learned everything I know about twinkly lights from John Thompson.
Amanda Running, and I'm an EMR and on my third year.
Assistant Fire Chief Glad Martin, twenty-five years.
Uh, Lieutenant Jared Rar, been on the department for eighteen years.
Uh, my name is Tim Mullin. I've been on the fire department and first responder for five years now.
My name's Ryan Marks. I'm captain on the department. I've been on for fifteen years.
I'm Brenda Torgerson. I am EMR and firefighter, and I'm starting my third year.
Matt White with, uh, Veroca Police Department. I've been here about three years now.
Also firefighter in Westby.
Yes, also Chief Three for the City of Westby Christian Fire Department. I've been on there since twenty twelve, so thirteen years.
I'm Owen Foschel, junior firefighter, roughly one year.
I'm Julian Jamila Worth, and I've been a junior firefighter for about a year now.
Oh, hi, my name is Jose Maria Rojas Nunez. I am a junior firefighter and I've been in the department for about four months.
I'm Ben Kimit, firefighter EMR for about nine years, I guess.
I've, I've seen Daisy around here, so she can come in and introduce herself.
Hi. Daisy Johnson, I'm the admin assistant for the Veroca Fire Department. For two years now, or three? Yeah, we lost count.
I'm guessing we have some online, maybe?
I, I will point out that Lieutenant Larson did message, his mic's not working, but Brandon Larson, who's also the Emergency Management Director in Vernon County, is a member of our department who's been on for eighteen years.
And who else did you say was on there? Josh, can you? You got a mic?
Yes, I do. Lieutenant Josh Brown, uh, almost fifteen and a half years now.
Thank you. Is that everybody?
I think so.
Okay. Um, and then obviously I'm Chad Burris, your fire chief with the Veroca Fire Department, twenty-six years. And I am a very proud fire chief to have, uh, be able to be everybody's, uh, everybody that's in this room and online and ones that are missing. I'm very proud to be their chief and to be able to be a part of their lives and, and being able to do what they do, so. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for letting us do this part. Um, and thank you, council, for giving us the tools to be able to do what we do every day, so thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank. Sure. We've met, um, uh, Lieutenant Justin Running, I've been with the Veroca Fire Department for, I think, six years this time and approximately ten years prior to that, so for a total of about sixteen years, I think. Right, chief? Huh? What's that? Well, thank you very much. Yes. Right. Yep, before you sneak out there, chief, we have a retired chief Wallen here also with us, who was a member of our department for twenty-nine years, twenty-eight and a half, thirty-eight and a half. I was trying to remember what it said on the cake. I just couldn't, couldn't do it, so, yes. Chief Wallen was a part of our department for many, many, many years, so, yeah. Thank you, everyone. That was the fun part of the night. All right. Yeah. Yeah. Uh huh, all right. Where am I at here? So we'll move on to item number six, which is discussion with possible action regarding temporary Class B beer license for Veroca Fire Department Association Annual Fundraiser on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Well, obviously, all these people wanna get together and have a fundraiser that we're just here, so, uh, Public Safety met earlier tonight and they are having their, um, annual fundraiser on March fifteenth from four to eleven PM um, at the fire station, so, um, Public Safety forwarded it with their approval for the Class B picnic license for beer.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the class beer B, Class B beer license for the Veroca Fire Department Annual Fundraiser on March fifteenth.
Cindy? AJ, I'll second.
Wow, we've got a motion in multiple seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number seven, discussion with possible action regarding temporary Class B beer license for Veroca Area Hockey Association Hockey Tournament on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
This also went to, um, Public Safety this evening. Um, it is a new event that the Hockey Association is having. They've had some in their, um, location before. This is for the men's hockey tournament fundraiser from five PM to eleven PM on March twenty-first. Um, the Public Safety Committee forwarded it with their approval and looking for your guys' approval on the Class B temporary license.
This is Seth. I make a motion, we approve the Hockey Association's Class B temporary license.
Start, I'll second it.
Aye.
All right. Sorry AJ, I didn't have my mic on. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Item number eight, review and approval of special event application, Family and Children's Center Awareness Event, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, uh, we have a new special event, so the, um, process now is if it's a recurring special event that's been through this process before and nothing that they're doing with their event has fundamentally changed. I review it, the department heads review it, and we internally approve it and say, you're good to go, no need to go back to council. Which is why you don't see those coming back every year, but this is a new event, so first time through, it has to come through council to make sure that everything sits well with you folks. We have two members from Family Children's Center with us tonight, Katrina Scoville and I believe it's Stephanie Clump. Um, and I'll put their faces up on screen so you can see them. Uh, they have submitted their packet, uh, to you. I will put it on the screen now. Um, it is, uh, well, why don't you guys go ahead and, and share what it is you are hoping to host this year?
Sure. Thank you first for having us. Congrats to John. Uh, that was fun to be part of. But I'm Katrina Scoville and our director Stephanie Clump is with us from Family and Children's Center. We had the chance to meet with Nate and Kale at the city to discuss our ideas and they helped us put our plan together, um, which has been submitted with the general layout. But we're excited to announce the return of this, uh, it's called the FCC and Partners in Wellness Fair. It's a free, family-friendly event that features games, activities, live music, and then we also have, um, demos and displays from various health and wellness organizations in the, in Veroca and Vernon County. Excuse me. We had the K nine unit show up last year too, which was a hit. I don't know if the police department is there, but we thank you for considering joining us again. Um, but it's just a, an incredible opportunity for the community to come together for a night of fun and, um, to commute, to learn about the many local services that support health and wellness and well-being. This year's event is planned for June twelfth from five to eight, and it's at a new, or we're hoping to have it at Eckert Park this year. Last year, we had it at the county fairground. Um, we're inviting sponsors to help us fundraise before the event, so the event itself is all about awareness and celebration. And all the proceeds support two vital programs, um, that, that are at FCC's Veroca office. It's the Other Door and Domestic Abuse Project. We have a committee with local Veroca and Vernon County, um, representatives that are helping us to play in for the event. And like I said, we submitted the, the, um, application and the general layout map. Um, and would love your input and your permit and approval as we continue to plan, and of course, we'd love for you to join us at the event as well on June twelfth, so mark your calendars. Stephanie, is there anything else?
No, I think you covered it. Thanks, Katrina.
Okay, any questions that we can answer?
Well, also just put the map up, uh, on the table. I always tell all the, um, organizers for any of these events that it's totally fine to, you know, get an aerial map and just draw on us and give us a, a, a general idea of what's going on. They have met with Kale. They, I think they did a walk through the property. Kale, is there any concerns or are you generally good to go with it? Yep. So Kale's good to go with it. Um, no need, and we're not, there's no closing of streets like we do some, uh, with a Driftless Music Festival. Um, but since this is sort of taking over the park for a period of time, that's why it comes to council, just because you're sort of, taking this public place and making it specifically for a use for a period of time, so. Um, I don't see any reason why, uh, this, uh, event should move forward for your approval. They have, the shelters are all rented and paid for. Kale's all on board with it and, um, it sounds like it should be a good event.
Cindy, I make a motion, we approve the special event application for Family and Children's Center Awareness Event, June twelfth.
Steve, I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please. I'm sorry, no, not, I was, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry about that. I was thinking too far ahead there. Thank you, Stephanie and Katrina for coming and we look forward to your event.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much. Hope to see you there.
Moving along to item number nine, discussion with possible action regarding MOU defining shift differential pay for the Veroca Police Association.
Uh, so the, we were approached by this from both the, um, our, um, in-house police union as well as the chief. Um, and I'll try to set up the stage for why it exists, so, um, typically, uh, or previously, I'm gonna move this here. The night shift hours had been six PM to six AM. Uh, the union contract states that for any hours worked between six PM and six AM, you get a shift differential, which is an additional seventy-five cents per hour. Recently, the schedules have changed, um, for those third shift employees and they now are five PM to five AM. And so they're still working third shift, they're just not giving the third shift dif-differential for all of their hours worked. So essentially, this MOU seeks to address that change. Um, it's been through myself, it's been through the mayor, it's been through Chief Needfeld, um, and it's also been through, uh, the police union as well as the Wisconsin Police Association through their, through their agent or, um, representative. Um, and everybody's on board with it. The reason that the second part, and again, the amendment is right here, the reason that the second part is here is because if we shift it from six to six to five to five, all of a sudden, there is, there's more people working between five and six PM than there is working between five AM and six AM. So if we move this without sort of cutting off some of the other employees who may all of a su-sudden find themselves with additional shift differential hours, we're gonna go over budget as a city, and because we're mid-contract year, that's not something that we're prepared to do, so. If you're wondering why that second set of language exists there, um, it, it was on the, um, previous, I think, council agenda, and there, there was a reason we had to bump it back here because we had to think through it a little bit more and make sure that it wasn't any sort of, um, unintended consequences, um, with the first draft, which there would have been. It would have been financial implications, and there also would have been implications where some people who had been receiving the shift differential wouldn't get it at all, and we didn't wanna do that either, so. We present this to you for your consideration and you have it with my recommendation.
I would agree with everything Nate said, if you're, just so you're curious, I mean, it, it's been looked at for numerous times over the last period of time. Did, I've talked with the chief, the chief had assured me that it made sense with him, the union. Um, Nate had spoke with the union, it, it sounds like they're on okay with it, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut off. If there's any questions about what's in front of you, um, I'm happy to get deep. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut off. If there's any questions about what's in front of you, I'm happy to get deeper into it.
Is it essentially making sure that that third shift, they get the pay for the hour before and the hour after that wasn't happening? It was only between six and six. And if they were working at five, they weren't getting that 75 cents for that.
So yeah, the, exactly. Essentially, all of a sudden, the third shift employees were getting paid instead of 12 hours of shift differential, they only get paid a lot in.
That's done. I'd move approval of the, of the agreement.
Steve, I second.
Got a motion in a second. That we will do a roll call on.
Steve.
Aye.
Seth.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Dr. King.
Aye.
Pat Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
And John.
Aye.
All right. We will move on down to item number 10, which is discussion with possible action on updated Hanson Farm Development Plan.
Okay. So I, as the project continues to move forward, it's just really important, I feel for us to continue to show updates as they happen. So what is in front of you at this time is the most up-to-date Hanson Farm Development Plan? And I'll go through some of the details. We won't get really into the weeds, but I'll just talk a little bit more about maybe what has changed since last we looked at this. And the biggest thing I wanted to do tonight is introduce a fourth developer. This developer has submitted a project plan for the multifamily section of land parcel just below the intended parkland. And it is as we, it has gone through VDA. So as we did with the other three developers who are named on this property, Dregney, Newen House and Vic Meyer Wangan. It went through VDA first and then it came to you folks to say, this is generally what they're thinking of doing before we spend a lot of extra time and effort pursuing this, doing MOUs, possible PUDs and other steps in the process. Let's make sure you're generally comfortable with the concept plan that is being produced. So so with us tonight, Jacob, Jacob, there you, Jacob, we've met. Okay. Jason, we've met before. I don't know why I run into you now. That's right. We have men in person. I was sitting there. It's like, I don't remember what these guys look like because I don't think I've met them, but we did. So if you guys want to use the microphone and introduce yourselves and sort of what your plan is, I have your site plan and we can kind of walk through it from there.
Jason Cooter, this is Jacob. Together collectively, we probably own and manage about 450 rental units throughout the area. Anything from townhomes to larger complexes.
Cashed in.
Yeah. You know, if cash and smart all the way up to Galesville across, so. Quite, quite the array.
Yeah, we do everything in-house, manage lawnmower and snowplow and everything. So.
So on the site plan here, I'll just show this to you. There, they've contracted with Veer Becker, who also helped us with the concept plan. And for the most part, you guys have sort of looked at our concept plan and said, yes, let's do that.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so what you see on screen here, and, and this one is a little outdated, so I'll just have to make a note. You'll see here, the original concept plan called for townhomes over here, two 12-unit apartment buildings, and then another row of 10 townhomes to the east. This property here is actually scheduled to be done by Vic Meyer Wangan. So this is a little bit of an outdated site plan. We don't have the other site plan that I showed you is a little hard to see exactly what's going on in there because of all the engineering notes. But essentially what their project will encompass is these two 12 units and these 10 row houses. Okay. So in a nutshell, and again, that falls almost exactly in line, if not entirely in line with our concept plan that the council voted forward probably 12 months ago now, or maybe closer to nine months. Okay. Here I have the proposal they submitted. Just generally goes through the schedule. Again, this is generally so as they're getting ready to get going, 26, 27, 28. This is three-year process to get what amounts to 24, 34, 34 units up. And here's some, I think you guys noted that these were inspiration pictures and maybe it wasn't going to look exactly. And if you want to throw on your microphone again.
Yeah, that's not going to be exactly. We'll probably make them just a little bit longer too there where it make them back bedrooms a little bit bigger.
And so we'll still have to talk through exactly what it will look like and we'll get concrete plans. But of course, this gives a really nice understanding of what exactly they're going for. So townhomes. You have some notes here. I don't know if you guys have changed from that yet. The development agreements, once we get to that point, we'll really wrap all this stuff more concretely. And then here's a 12, I don't know if you guys want to talk about this at all.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we got three 12 units in Galesville that are pretty similar. This is just, we built a spec house in Eau Claire way back in the day and the guys that we built that spec house with built these up in Eau Claire and we like this design a little bit better because it keeps all the, ours, ours in Galesville have, it's broken into like four different sections. So people got to share hallways and this keeps everybody from the garage up to their unit completely separate. So people enjoy that. And then we don't have to clean hallways too, I guess.
Thank you, guys. So again, what we're looking for tonight, council is just a general, your thoughts on the concept plan, I would call it at this point, although it is, they've done a really good job of very quickly getting me exactly what we were looking for in terms of materials. Whether or not this concept plan is, has your vote to move forward for further consideration and putting together of MOUs and development agreements.
Thank you, Nate. Questions?
Yeah. So culvers will be tucked right around here, Todd. And then if you and quite a bit lower, and quite a bit lower. Right? And so you could, this is the general site map. So you can see the culvers there and see how the townhomes rest within there. Small changes. And again, I don't want to go into details, but this property here will sort of, instead of having access off this will sort of be curbed, which means there's some, I think, really solid benefits for both property owners over here. Allows a little bit more street parking and things like that, but that's where we're working through it with the folks at Veer Becker and Sarah as well. So. Seth, did you have something?
Are the roads, are those public right of ways or are those the, are they private?
Yeah, that's a great question. So anything that is the darker shade of gray is a private drive.
Okay.
Okay. And so here, and the reason we did that here is because it's really challenging for our snowplows when there's not a cul-de-sac or a loop to make. And, and making this a, a public road, which is increased infrastructure costs on us. And then the same thing for Jacob and Jason's property. I mean, usually it's for all intensive purposes, a drive in a parking lot. And so that's more notably falls to the developer. So.
Sorry, are these all rental properties? Okay.
Yeah. So they don't have the option to really, unless they want to do some sort of conduit or co-op policy, they don't really have the option to do zero lot lines. So the duplexes can all be zero lot lined and sold because they have street frontage, public road, street frontage. These, these don't. And that's usually a major indicator of whether something can be sold outright. And again, when we designed this as a concept plan, the idea was to get a nice mix of, of owner occupied versus lease and most of, of these will all be sold and the ones that can't be, I think even Vic Meyer Wangan's looking at selling some of these under a, maybe a co-op or some other agreements. So I think we're, we're hitting the mix that we were looking for when we talked about this about nine to 12 months ago.
So we're looking for basically a motion saying that we support this plan, which builds up.
For us to, I guess we would call this preliminary authorization to move forward with Riverland architects towards the next phase in the development process.
We take a motion.
Something along those lines. You don't have to repeat it verbatim. I see Seth there thinking if he can remember it.
This is Seth. I'd make a motion that we allow moving forward with the preliminary plans with Riverland investments as to the Hanson Property multifamily area.
Cindy, I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any other questions? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along here, review and approval of proposals by elders for capital investment plans, financial analysis.
Okay. I'm sorry, can we go back more to 10? I wasn't quite done with that.
Back to the Hanson Farm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just, just real quick. General other updates, engineering is moving forward very nicely. We did soil pit testing out there and they found a good amount of topsoil, which is similar to the business park. We're probably going to have excess topsoil, which isn't the worst thing in the world. If we have weight, if we have a lot of topsoil, that can become problematic, but, but they didn't find a lot of rocks. So knock on wood, when we go to do some rough grading, we're not going to run into a bunch of boulders. So basically Matt has said, Matt Mukha from Veer Becker has said that everything on the engineering side is looking really good and nothing that they've run into so far is going to sort of derail or hinder the development from moving forward. I have a quick timeline that I thought I had up a, we'll pull it up real quick just to give everybody an idea of exactly what's going to come from here. And that's, that's part of what I wanted to hit tonight. So let's see, mid-March, we're going to hopefully be going out to bid on this project from an infrastructure standpoint. As we hit that point, we're going to want all MOUs bundled up so that we can make sure that we're going into the bidding process with soft commitments. All developers continue to be very interested and excited. I think every time I talk to Jacob, he tells me how excited he is to move forward with this project, those exact words. And so we'll want to make sure we have MOU, signed MOUs in hand, which is sort of like that soft commitment. And then bid opening, we're looking around mid-April with construction contracts signed around early May. And what that means is that we want signed development agreements, the, the hard legal, you know, obligations from both parties in hand before we start signing construction documents. Because once we sign construction documents, we're obligated to the cost of construction and we don't want to obligate ourselves until we make sure we have development ready to go and wanting to go in there. So the next three months will be a lot of making sure we're knocking out details and that we're getting into a good space where the city and all the developers can agree to terms. And then from there, May 15th through June 30th is roughly scheduled for rough grading. At some point in July, we'll hand over the land is our goal to the developers and we'll have to do a lot of coordination on when they can get their teams on site to do final grading and start maybe laying foundations in early fall if they so choose and things like that. So as I get further than that, the forecast on it, when exactly stuff happens gets a little murkier, but those are the sort of the broad points. Are there any questions on timelines?
At that point, are all four of these developers going to be building at the same time essentially?
Some of them have different schedules. I, I, I think about half of them may start getting going in 2025, but I think most of the activity, when you really start seeing all of them go is in 26.
Will it be our goal to have the main roadways in place in 25?
That would be the plan.
That's the plan. Okay.
There, like always, there may be some stuff that gets delayed to the following year. I don't know if they're going to put the second lift on the roads until after the following year to see how things settle over the winter. That's a typical plan. But stuff like that, where you're talking about restoration work and stuff coming in, into the next year.
So are these developments only going to be accessible from Chicago starting off?
Yeah, for, for the, for the next, until conceivably 27. But we have, we continue to receive really positive news from the DOT on the Walmart intersection, being approved with grants. And, you know, lit intersections and that's actually coming together really well, especially when you consider how, I don't want to call it slow, but how slow the DOT takes compared to most people, like most people's idea of getting stuff done is like, oh, a year. Well, they're like a three-year, getting stuff done in three years is a quick timeline for the DOT, all things considered. So.
I think it's from my perspective, it's probably worth pointing out the fact that, you know, we got into this, you know, VDA had bought this land, held onto it for a little while and we're trying to sort out what was going to happen. And, and there seemed like nothing happened for too long and everybody got a little nervous and now all of us. So I don't think, at least from my perspective, to be at the position we are today is pretty shocking how fast it all kind of came together and folks stepping up to do these projects shows the need for, for it in our community. So at least from my perspective, from a planning, we haven't talked a lot about some of the other things, but I mean, it's happening very fast, which is super exciting. I think, I mean, and there's a need and we all know the need, you know, for housing in town. So it's very, very, I mean, this filled up. These, these guys are taking the last residential spaces in the whole development. So.
And we continue to get serious interest about people who want to be other developers who want to come in and we're being, we're kind of now in the weird angle of having to turn some developers away.
Right.
Because we sort of have people already in place. So.
And I hope, I think, I would think it'd be a safe bet to say that by early to midsummer, we'll have the commercial stuff.
Yeah, we're, we're getting.
Amendments, like it's really, I mean, it's, it's really movement. So that's really exciting.
So in terms of some of the stuff that's on there regarding the other detail sidewalks and bike and pedestrian plans and stuff regarding the stormwater, we'll, we'll bring that back. That's not really the conversation for tonight, if you're okay with that. But just so you know, this council will have more opportunity into saying some of the design decisions on the infrastructure and things like that will be coming later because I know that was a a really passionate point that we had when we made the concept plan. And so that'll come back later, but I think we have what we have for now unless there's any other questions.
Other questions?
I just wanted to thank Nate and everybody involved because I'm sure it's been a tremendous amount of work to put this thing together.
Yeah, Sarah has been awesome. Veer Becker is just
Sarah has done a really tremendous job along with Veer Becker and really doing the engineer part. I continue to just be impressed by, about how quickly and well they put these things together and they've been just great partners. Well, Sarah, an employee, Veer Becker, a partner. So. Sarah, do you have anything to comment? I know you're into weather, but is there anything you want to say about the development plan at this point? Just as food for thought?
No, you've done a really good job.
Thanks, Sarah. She sounds like I did at Public Safety.
Thank you, Sarah, also.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else? Otherwise we'll move on. We'll hop back to item number 11 then, which is review and approval of proposal by elders for capital investment plan, financial analysis.
When we did the capital improvement plan, the last cycle, we had elders come in and look at our plan and basically tell us whether it was a good idea or not, all the stuff we were trying to take on. This is no different. I've worked with the capital improvement review team. So Cindy and now I can't even remember, was it Todd? No, Steve, I'm sorry, bud. I said, I forgot. And and we, we've looked at, we've put together a lot of financial data and forecast and run amortization schedules on debt and things like that. But to move forward without having the experts look at the plan we've put together would be really foolish. Before, you know, if we do that before we adopt it, or if we don't do that before we adopt the plan. So essentially what others has put together here is a scope of services for review of our and financial modeling and So essentially what others has put together here is a scope of services for review of our, and financial modeling, modeling and analysis of our capital improvement plan, which we have in draft form right now. So this just quickly goes through, um, a lot of what you've seen when I've talked about the administrative and financial guidelines. They're going to talk about general obligation borrowing comatic, capacity, uh, our fund balance, our cash reserves. Um, debt service levy is something that we talked about, like how much annually can the community take in terms of what we're levying just for debt service. And then of course you see here, water and sewer, sewer utility are key um, components for, uh, road reconstruction projects as well as utility only projects like J Street Lift Station and trucks and, um, and other things. And then the tax increment districts. So it's really going to look at all of our financials. I mean, of course, things like the golf course utility and stuff like that, not so much, but really the key, um, funds that we're going to be digging into in order to make our capital projects work. So the amount that they have put forward is thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, elders is always very reasonable in speaking with, um, Sarah and Cheryl. Um, essentially the way this is going to be split is it's going to be twelve thousand to the general fund, twelve thousand to the TIDS and, um, eleven hundred to the utilities because they're just a smaller portion. So I figured they can pay one hundred dollars less. So, um, that would be essentially what's in front of you today. I will note that on the general fund side, we did not budget for this. That was an omission on my part that I should have seen coming is that we're going to have to pay elders to do our CIP um, review, financial review. Um, but I would encourage us to, um, basically state, we'll find money somewhere. And for twelve hundred dollars, we would be fools not to do this analysis before we commit to spending a serious amount of dollars. So, um, I apologize for that miss, but, um, we'll figure out a way to make it work and I'll, I'll have that for you at a later time.
You said twelve hundred dollars?
Twelve hundred dollars to the general fund is what we didn't have budgeted. So hopefully it's a, not quite under a thousand, but.
You were saying twelve thousand, twelve thousand, twelve thousand, and then twelve hundred. And I was trying to do the math there and I.
Doesn't add up. It doesn't add up. Twelve hundred, twelve hundred, eleven hundred. Sorry, folks.
That makes much more sense. Questions? I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
This is Todd. I move to approve the proposal by elders for the capital improvement plan, financial analysis.
Cindy, I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Seth.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And Steve.
Aye.
All right. Moving along to item number twelve, review and approval of pay request number six for the fire station project. Haven't heard enough from the chief tonight, so we'll have him come on back.
So this was included as part of your packet. Um, chief, I don't know if you want to go ahead and give them a, oh, thank you, guys. If you want to go ahead and give a rundown, I know you spoke briefly at Public Safety about where the project's at. But, um, anything related to this?
Yeah, I, I mean, that, there's nothing that, you know, pops out in this pay request. It's just kind of business as usual and little by little, they're asking for their money as, as things go through. Uh, I had a good talk with Levi, um, this go around on it. There was a couple of things that he brought up to, to my attention to just kind of watch for, nothing bad, but again, having that good conversation between, um, Levi and, and myself to, to stay on the same page. Um, yeah, I, everything's moving smoothly. Uh, Nate mentioned, I talked to Public Safety a little more in depth of, of how the project's going. Um, no, no real surprises, little things here and there, but again, as far as the pay request, it's, it's what we, we expect. So, anybody have any questions, details?
Cindy, I make a motion. We approve the pay request number six for the fire station project.
This is Seth. I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
And Seth.
Aye.
All right. Item number thirteen, review and approval of pay request number three for the twenty twenty-four sewer project.
All right. Oh, good. I was gonna say, did you share your screen with me? All right. So you're gonna have to bear with me if I don't make some sense sometimes. I am trying hard to, uh, keep it together. Um, okay, so this would be pay request three for the sewer project. Um, we've been continuing throughout the winter on and off. And, um, we recently are, are in a pause, which will hopefully get started in a couple of weeks here again, and then pause again until the spring. Um, so we were really happy to find that our pay request went into dispersments from the EPA came through. Uh, so we are just hoping to keep spending this money as long as they'll give it to us. Um, so we have pay request three largely, this is, uh, the stormwater work that you've probably seen. We had some closures of Chicago Avenue and that was because they were crossing with the storm sewer. Uh, there wasn't a lot of surprises, a few changes in pipe size. We ran into some bad material on the edge of Marquette, which makes sense given the, the status of the old landfill there. Excuse me, um. And then in this, you always see a weird number at the bottom. Um, because it's a negative number, but that's because this is our stored materials and as they use them, they take the value off and eventually that number will be zero. So, um, looking, this came from Public Works and was approved, looking for a payment of the one hundred and sixty three thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
Thank you, Sarah.
Cindy, I'll make a motion. We pay the one hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
Mr. Todd, I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Seth.
Aye.
And Andrew.
Aye.
Right. Uh, moving along, item number fourteen, discussion with possible action on proposal from Town and Country Engineering for wastewater treatment facility assessment.
Okay, um, this one is not driven by anybody but the staff. Um, we really want to make sure that we have a good handle on the wastewater treatment facilities. So it seems like we just did a giant upgrade, which we did, but it wasn't just. The process started in two thousand fifteen and so that was the last time the plant was analyzed um, in terms of the conditions of equipment. And while we did replace, I would say probably eighty-five to ninety percent of the equipment, we did not replace everything. And so, um, we know that there are certain components of the system that are needing to be replaced in the near future. Uh, and we also want to make sure that our expectations of the infrastructure is consistent with what was seen when we looked at it in two thousand fifteen. So, you know, are the things that we think are on the top of the replacement list actually the still in the condition that they need to be replaced or vice versa, something that we didn't have on the top of the list actually does need to be looked at sooner than later. So that's one major component. Uh, the other thing is since two thousand fifteen, the types of things that are issues for wastewater plants, emerging contaminants and things like that. Um, some of them are changed, so there's things that we would look at now that we never looked at before. Um, PFAS is a big one in that. Um, and then just looking as we have seen with our, um, success with North Point and the Hanson Farm, uh, we had an analysis in two thousand fifteen that we have plenty of space. But we just want to make sure that everything is still lining up how we expect. We do not want to have any surprises. And so this is an analysis that would also update our, um, facilities plan, which is a plan that we are required to have in order to do any significant upgrade at the wastewater plant or to receive funding from the DNR to do anything like that. Um, so this one's got a, a bigger price tag. It's seventeen thousand, five hundred. Um, but it's really for having a specialized, um, look at this. So Town and Country Engineering, we have a lot of, um, expertise that we've seen there over the years. We use them specifically for the wastewater plant. We have used them for other similar type projects like the lift station on Highway fourteen north. Um, but they are our go-to firm when it comes to the wastewater plant and they have a lot of knowledge about our wastewater plant because they were the ones that did the upgrades. So this also came from Public Works and it would be coming from, uh, sewer utility funds. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions?
Uh, as Sarah said, Public Works did approve it and it just made a lot of sense to be proactive. Seventeen-five could be a drop in the bucket compared to what it could cost us if we missed something. So, I make a motion that we approve the proposal from Town and Country Engineering for wastewater treatment facility assessment.
This is Seth. I second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Seth.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item number fifteen, discussion with possible action on annual maintenance agreement with H and N.
Okay, I think this is my last one for a while. Um, okay, so we just felt, um, we as in Tyrell and myself, Nate, looking at, um, the condition of making sure our buildings have proper HVAC and some of the things that we've experienced. Um, wanted to get at, at least the library and city hall on an annual maintenance agreement for the HVAC systems. Um, and then we always had the plan that, you know, we would take the library and city hall on first and then slowly start adding additional buildings in terms of things that we need to help with the rest of the city. Um, and so this is including the current fire station, the library, the police station and the city hall building, and it would be for both the air conditioning and the heating systems for all buildings except for the library. Um, they, at the libraries HVAC or air conditioning system is more complicated. And, um, we have a few leads for, uh, different firms that we'd like to use for that. Um, however, this is essentially taking care of the annual maintenance. Um, and, and they actually contacted me today and said, have you finished this yet? We want to come and look at city hall heating system. And I said, just hold on one more, one more day and then book us in right away. So, um, this would mean that we wouldn't really have to think about making sure they're scheduled in each year. They're just going to know that at least for this year. And then if we approve it for next year, we're just always on their schedule and they're going to, you know, have familiarity with our system. So I think it's money well spent. And, uh, Nate, I think you took, look, took the split for the cost last time.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's a bad segue.
For, for this, uh, we have, uh, two GLs that will look to pull this out of. Uh, the bulk of it, thirty-five hundred dollars will come out of the general city maintenance account. That account is designed to serve the three buildings that are city hall, police department and the library because those departments do not have their own, I guess, internal sort of maintenance budget. Whereas Public Works, the utilities, fire department and Park and Rock all sort of have their own internal maintenance budget to take care of their properties. So for this thirty-five hundred from the general maintenance budget, three hundred dollars from the fire station budget. And I talked to the chief about that and he negotiated very tough with me and tried to work me down to two seventy and I said, how about three-ten? So three hundred was a, a good number and I think in general, um, this amount of money is just really important to make sure that our buildings are kept up, have that preventive maintenance and that we can avoid, um, that we can catch trouble coming down the line before it becomes an emergency, right? Like what we just had happen with the library. So I appreciate, really appreciate Sarah and Tyrell's uh, efforts on this. This is something that we've been like, sort of working towards as she mentioned, since we brought Public Works on as sort of the official um, building management group.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Questions? Now we'd be looking for a motion.
This is Steve.
I have one question before we.
Go ahead.
The six units for the police station, did we figure out what filter results were?
Uh, he did not know what they were, but he, um, we actually had discussed whether, because right now with the city hall building, we purchased the filters ourselves and he said that it might actually be a better way to do it. And so we'll work, um, out those filters, but I would say that, um, we're looking at what we have here for, and that those aren't, the fires, the, excuse me, the PD is not included, but we would work it out in the, the mix that we would do it the cheapest way possible.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Andrew.
Thanks, CJ.
I remembered his question from before and I.
Yeah. Did we?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Yeah, that we, I guess, approve the annual maintenance agreement with H and N.
Is there a second?
Todd, I'll second his motion.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Do we know when the contracts start? Is it like, will it be whenever it's signed and then it's annual to that?
This will be for twenty twenty-five, right, Sarah? Yep, yep. Great. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Seth.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
All right, item number sixteen, payment of the bills.
Finance reviewed these earlier this evening. Um, the one thing I was pointing out, um, for the most part, um, is under the general city computer expense. You guys had approved ten thousand dollars to come out of the ARPA funds. So when you see on page three, um, the stuff for MCS networks, the fifty-one, thirty, sixty, twenty-six, twenty-nine, twenty-seven, seventeen, sixty-five, thirteen, and the four seventy-five, that all adds up to the ten thousand dollars that'll be coming out of ARPA funds. So, and then it'll be dribbled throughout the rest of the different departments for the other managed services. And then, uh, finance approved to forward it to you guys. Cindy, I make a motion. We pay the bills.
Todd, I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
John.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Seth.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade. And Cindy.
Aye.
All right, item number seventeen, possible close session per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five, one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governing body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is in regards to wastewater operator compensation.
Should we go into closed session?
Todd, I'll second.
AJ, I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Steve.
Aye.
Seth.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
And John.
Aye.
All right, I'm going to give Nate a second to get everything situated. We'll get one door open and then I'll take it off here. All right, we are back in open session. We're going to move on to item number eighteen, which is ravine reconvene and open session with possible action on items discussed during closed session.
Make a motion. We approve what was discussed in closed session.
This is Seth. I'll second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
And Seth.
Aye.
All right, item number nineteen is second period for public comment. Nobody here. Is there anybody online that wishes to make a public comment?
Thank you, good mayor.
All right, with that, I would move to adjournment.
Todd, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hey, good job. Is there a second? Got a motion. Is there a second?
AJ, I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion. All right, we've got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oh, sorry, AJ. We'll put you down as aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.